Where would be a compliance? We didn't sell the rest of it for.
Eleven hundred dollars.
Yeah, I know. It's crazy, isn't it?
So that would actually be twenty-four hundred.
Yeah. He'd been hired before we sold the entire unit.
Oh, no, that is the total, eleven.
The entire unit?
Yeah, five hundred and five hundred.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah.
Still a lot of money for what it is.
I think we have to vote on these. So these are the, um, checks for the, um, current use. Don't we have to vote on that?
We already signed off on it. We just have to sign the checks. Again, I'll make sure they're the same ones.
Two of them. Yes, they are. I believe they are.
Okay, we are, I, um, well, I'll talk about a second. We will open the Rollinsburg Select Board meeting for August the 27th. It is six thirty. First order of business is the approval of minutes. I didn't have any, uh, any edits on all those checks though. Are in the minutes that we approve. Hey, we just had to sign the checks this morning.
Oh, um, I was okay with that.
All right, so by consensus, we'll prove the August 20th minutes. We have, um, we have six thirty appointment with Mr. Kavanaugh. Do you want to come on up? Can you discuss your situation?
Basically, when I own 420, 420 Fountain Street, owned it for 14 years. It was previously owned by Keith Kalinsky. Bought off him in 2004. We now live on Woodland Drive, over on the other side. Been in town. My wife's acting in the school board and everything. I'm looking to get a variance for my third unit. It was built with permits in the back. Needs a shore permit pulled, so I can get an occupancy permit for it. I'm short eight hundred square feet. So I'd like to get a variance if possible.
We can grant variance.
I know, I need to know how. Nobody's actually been able to tell me which direction to go.
Right, so there was, um, 1999, I think it was, file that I saw. There was, um, application for variance because of the, um, the lot size requirement for the additional unit, and it was denied.
Okay.
So the only other course of action then, this board can't do anything. The zoning board can't do anything. The next course of action is either the Superior Court or the, uh, the, uh, Board of Land and Tax. I don't want to go backwards, but I think it's Board of Tax and Land Appeal. It's either appeal.
Yep.
The acronym might be backwards, but, um, that's what you have to do.
I see. It carries over for the property, not the owner.
It's the property, it's not the owner, right?
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so that would be an exclusive action?
Unfortunately, yeah. We've been, we were trying to figure out if there was a way that we could do something in town.
Yeah.
So that you don't have to go through this process, but it doesn't, we talked to our, the building inspector and code enforcement officer, so no. If you were asking the ZBA for a different ruling on the property, then you could, you could ask for another variance? I mean, if you were asking for something separate, but that's, what you need is the, uh, is the lot size is really the issue.
Yeah.
You need, what, one and a half times, I think, as for?
Yeah, I got adequate off-street parking and everything.
Yeah, except for other things. I don't know why it was denied back then.
Well, right, because Keith didn't follow any of the rules.
It could have been, I mean, I don't know. I wasn't involved with it, so.
Yeah, I've, I've taken his wrath a few times.
So you're looking to add another septic? Or is it, oh, it's town, is it a town server?
No, everything's running, stubbed into the basement.
Okay.
And I tested everything, everything's good. I was just gonna put a shore injection unit and then run it over the Orange Line.
It shouldn't have been plumbed and all that, because the, the water department hadn't signed off on it either back in the, whatever.
Yeah, I was planning on, I talked to the code enforcement guy, and I was planning on, you know, buying all the steps to go, have it in septic, except, that's why I did the work, so.
Right.
I, you know, I like to do the things way Keith did.
I, I think we'll appreciate that, but, um, unfortunately, we're, our handle title is, uh...
So it would be Office of who now?
So it's the Board of Land and Tax Appeal, right?
At Conqueror?
Yeah, it's in Conqueror, so. Or you can go to the Superior Court. I mean, either way, you need to, you could represent yourself. I could technically represent myself at Superior Court, I think, but, um, I wouldn't, but, um, you can represent yourself at the Tax, Board of Tax and Land Appeal. It's a much, I don't wanna say easier process, but probably less intimidating and...
Yeah.
All of that stuff because longer going to court.
And probably quicker.
Probably, well, I don't know if it's quicker than that.
Well, versus court, I mean.
Well, yeah. They schedule quite a year or something in the court, so.
All right, so.
I'm sorry, yeah, we, I looked into this a lot, or a lot today with the code enforcement officer, and we went back and forth. It doesn't look like there's anything that we can do once that decision's been rendered.
Because there's no appeal process to them.
At the town level, no. Once you go, because the ZBA is sort of a quasi-judicial, um, committee.
Okay.
That, um, then the next step is to go to a court or the, the, that board, if they're going to Conqueror, so.
So if they approve it, then?
If you weren't there, then, what did Tom say? Then, yeah, you would be, you would be able to...
It would notify us.
Yes, and you either, I don't know, I'd have to find out again what happens after that. Um, if you come back here for another hearing, or if that's just the final step. I think it's the final step, because you've gone to the next level.
Then I'd have, then I could go get my permits and follow the normal procedure.
If they, um, if the, if that board says that for some reason, the, the process on our end, I mean, it was also quite a long time. Nineteen ninety-nine, so I don't, I can't speak to the process, I don't know, I wasn't there, so. If for some reason it wasn't done correctly, you could be appealed on a technicality? I mean, there could be a whole host of things, so I don't know.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know that it's all doom and gloom. I mean, I would, if you're very serious about it, I would think that you would want to go that next step.
Yeah, yeah, I do, because it's such a waste. I mean, it's a perfect one-bedroom apartment and eight hundred square feet on the lot.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, I'll, um, let's face it, we're somewhere.
I just need to really find out direction to go, because I wasn't really, nobody was sure.
Yeah, we've, it was only late until in the day that we finally got the final term.
Okay, no, I appreciate your help, and I appreciate you looking at it.
I really am sorry that there's, you know, nothing else we can do for you, but.
Should have been more.
Well, there is one other thing you can do. I mean, you can file a civil suit, because I don't know what they told you when you bought the property, or if they told you that, yo, everything was fine, you're all set.
Well, they told me to come here and get an occupancy permit, that everything was good.
That's true.
Didn't tell me anything about any of the, it's, I didn't do my due diligence. That was my fault.
They should have disclosed that, though, too, to be honest, but...
Yeah.
Just to tell you that, oh, yeah, just come get a permit, you're all set. That's not the truth, you know?
Denise Caldwell Ellis was the realtor, just to have it on record.
So if you can't find them, let us know, and we'll get it, we'll find it for you.
Okay. What's that, the contact?
No, no, the, um, the website for that.
Oh, I should be able, I should be able to find it.
Oh, yeah, you can, you could just go to the same website.
I'll just look whatever their appeal process is.
Probably should go to the same site, yeah.
And sign up for that, so.
And you should ask, um, we should be able to provide you a copy, too, of the, of the file. If we have it here, so.
Okay.
And I, to be honest, that's what I would do, the first thing, would come to Caroline tomorrow and ask for a copy of the, of the file. So you have it all.
All right, I will do that.
You'll need, you'll need that for the... Free appointment with them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll have that. I already got maps of the property and everything, and I'll lay it out, so you should be good on that end. Okay, well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and I appreciate all the effort in it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next order of business on the agenda is community input. Do we have any, uh, any community input? Other community input for this evening, at this stage in the game? Okay, by the agenda. All right. First department head that came in was the police chief. Are you okay? We usually do an apocalyptic order, but he's been fine.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't care, we have three purchases over tonight. First is LaBelle Computer Services. He's informed me that the, um, subscription that we have for the advanced firewall, antivirus, malware, encryption, whenever, has expired. And the company that we had with is a Russian company, and is now on the no-use list. Uh, so he's, he's done some research and, um, I, I could not pronounce the name, to be honest with you. Um, but he's done some research, and the company's located, it's called Sophos Central Intercept X. So we have a three-year subscription for 14 computers. And he's got 14 years, I'm assuming it must include upstairs as well. Um, so for LaBelle Computer Services, purchase order number 1455, for 14 encryption, advanced firewall, antivirus licenses, uh, one thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty cents. And I will talk with Caroline to see if it'll come out even with technology. If there's not enough to leave there, I have money in my equipment account that I can certainly use it.
Okay. So I move here to sort of 1455 on LaBelle Computer Services for, um, subscription license for three years for, uh, advanced firewall and malware? Is that what that was?
Malware.
Okay, and antivirus. For one thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty cents.
Second, any discussion? We, um, we do have money in the, in the technology line, so.
Okay.
Okay, any, uh, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of purchase order 1455, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right.
Okay, purchase order number 1413 to two-way communications. Um, this is for a prisoner partition, which is the cage for the new car. Originally, we were going to take the cage out of the Taurus and put it in the new Explorer. And now it fit perfect. However, since we sidelined the old Explorer, that cage is just too, it's too narrow and it's too tall to fit in the new Explorer. So we had to purchase a, a subcage for that install. And that'll come out of my equipment line, and that is for the amount of six hundred and forty-four dollars.
Why do they do two-way communications?
Because they order all that stuff and do all the installs.
Oh, just non-radios, that stuff, they do that as well?
Oh, they do it all.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, so I move purchase order 1413 for two-way communications for a prisoner partition for the Cruiser 72, coming out of the equipment account for six hundred and forty-four dollars.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor of purchase order number 1413, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right.
And my last purchase order, number 1460 to Todd's Touch, to install an auto starter and anti-theft system in the new vehicle. It's an anticipated expense, we anticipated it, and that's three hundred and fifty dollars.
And the purchase order 1460 for Todd's Touch for auto starter and anti-theft for the Cruiser 72, three hundred and fifty dollars. Coming out of the equipment account.
Second, any discussion of purchase order 1460? If not, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right.
All right, and the last item that I have is the, old 72 is now ready to go to bid, it's been stripped. Um, Mike Spiny took all the decals off a little weekend for us, so I'll get together with Caroline, and she'll prepare something for your approval, and then we'll get it out here as soon as possible.
Perfect.
Rather than have it sitting around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the other one's actually not on, but it's not on the road yet, right?
It's not being used. It's, it's still being, like, Wednesday, we have it getting, uh, U-Haul installed in the trailer hitch and whatnot. So it's, still a couple of things, supposed to be stripped, so.
In the need, you could, but right now you're...
Oh, yeah, it could be used, oh, sure, it could be used, yeah. All right, that's all that for you folks, anything for me?
Budget time.
Yes, it is.
Everyone's favorite time of the year, right? So our, um, our schedule is accelerated because of the change in, um, form of, um, municipal government that we will be following under the SB two model. So we have to have all of your information much sooner. So we have, um, we're gonna go over the, the calendar tonight, but look for an email on the next, probably tomorrow, actually, because we're gonna set the deadlines tonight, but it's gonna be earlier than usual.
Okay.
Which I know doesn't tell you much, but, um, when do you usually get your information in?
Usually it's, uh, around the beginning of October.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be earlier than that, for sure.
Yeah, it won't be an issue.
Because we have to have our, our first hearing on the, uh, on our budget. Well, we only have to have one. Where did it go? I highlighted, um, the last day to give notice of the public hearing on the annual budget is January 15th, and then the hearing itself is, where did I, left my highlighted copy on? The last day to actually hold the public hearing is January 15th. Oh, January 8th is the last day to give notice for January 15th, sorry. Got my glasses on, still can't read. Um, so we'll need to be, and we'll need to work on it, clearly, so. Um, end of September, maybe?
That's not a problem.
Okay.
I don't anticipate any...
Even earlier is better, so.
At this point, I don't anticipate any large increases or whatnot, so.
Did you all...
Well, it depends on what happens with conversations, but that's a whole separate thing. As far as the police budget itself, I don't anticipate any large changes. Yeah, yeah, so.
We did have a meeting last, um, last week.
Okay.
And we're still on a little hold, waiting for some conversations to happen, so.
Okay.
But we'll have an update for you soon.
Okay. Um, how did the, I saw that the event went really well at the Elks, huh?
It went very well. Went very well. Um, there were many folks from Rollins were there, as well as...
The governor, I saw?
The governor was there, a couple of folks from the Attorney General's office.
Yeah.
The, uh, the New Hampshire Budget Director, who apparently is a Rollinsburg resident, or what, as a former Rollins resident, Zellum, kind of lives in Rollins, right?
Yeah, huh, no kidding.
And, uh, have some, a few others, uh, with us.
That's great. I saw there was quite a few people.
Well, you invited, I did, it went very well.
No, it's just me.
I had, we had, I had a horrible migraine, I haven't said it, by the time I got there.
It was a great event, but they did a lot of hard work.
They really did. On Wednesday, we had the story in, in, uh, Boston, Channel Five, Channel 25, yes, it is.
Okay.
Um, and went viral. They, they made it go viral.
Oh, wow.
So within 24 hours, his GoFundMe page went from four thousand dollars, it's right now, it's over forty thousand dollars.
That's awesome. That's great. Tell the people from Alaska came, and it was...
Yeah, we had some folks from Alaska there, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, very nice.
The governor was pretty much an unexpected, uh...
Yeah, and he spoke a little bit, that was nice.
Yeah.
But the, the Elks need to be commended, they can't.
For sure, yeah.
And I sent him an email, uh, yesterday, because they completely worked hard. Do you have any idea what he took in on that?
I don't as of yet. I know they gave him, um, I think, three thousand in cash that night. And, um, from the little square thing that they were using to take some money. It was three thousand on that.
Wow.
But they still had several more.
That's great, good friend.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not an inexpensive journey, though.
Yeah.
And his family was there, too, that was nice.
Was it the Long, some students of Long, that organized all the Elks?
Yes.
Yes, yes. And, well, there was just many, there was just many people that was...
And they have no connection to them, they just saw on paper.
Yeah, no connection whatsoever, and, uh, that's, that's what was really surprising about this whole thing, that, uh, that they just saw the article, the original article in the papers, and said, we need to do something.
Sure. Nice to hear there's still some good in the world.
Yes, definitely.
Absolutely.
So we'll send you some harder deadlines, so that you know exactly when, when we decide.
I've already started working on it, so it's, it won't be until...
Sounds good.
All right, thank you much, enjoy it.
All right, night.
Couple of purchase orders. First one is 1436, it's a National Wrecker Service. Last Monday night, while doing vehicle checks and, uh, the normal monthly routine of it, the tank decided it wanted to blow an airline. So this was like at eight o'clock at night while they're finishing up their, their equipment stuff, so. Normally to get these things repaired, we call National Wrecker, so. They came out and had it fixed within the size of an hour.
Oh, they fixed it right on site?
Yeah, I have it saved, yeah. Usually wrap up by nine, they come right up here, and we just make the call, and we make the call at eight o'clock. He was there at eight twenty, and it fixed by eight fifty.
Wow, great.
And then today, the bill comes in.
I just keep saying great, what's the, what's the damage?
Yeah, what's the bill?
Um, like I said, emergency repairs to Tank One, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-one cents. And like, no, because it's an after-hours, it's a emergency call, they get a hundred and fifty dollar right out of the gate just to come, so.
Taking a lot more, I think, so.
All right, I move purchase order 1436 to National Wrecker Service, emergency repair of Tank One for airline failure, three twenty-five ninety-one. If you have a hair.
That would be a line, there's still plenty of funding.
Second, that, okay, any other discussion of purchase order 1436? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Maybe go this way, right?
Yep.
Caroline approves through. And the second purchase order which I have is to, um, 1435, State and Hampshire Department of Safety. And it's for a new member we've added to the fire department. His name is Colin Rose, and he's currently enrolled, and he's been in for a month in his Level One certification class. So he's driving on his own three days a week to Plastow. He's a, he's a full-time auto mechanic at Dover Honda, but he's wishing to make a switch into the fire service, so he's kin to us. He's gone out and got his ENT on his own, no cost to us, but we're utilizing that skill already. So we're gonna work with him to get him through the Fire Academy. So the normal, um, class on a, if you're going through the academy, is upwards of four thousand dollars. This is only for satellite classes, because he's affiliated, we're part of that outfit, so it's eight hundred and ten dollars. It's gonna be our cost for him to go through this.
Is that online, or is that instant classroom?
No, it's, it's go-to class. This weekend, he spent the whole weekend in the flashover simulator in the Kian up at the Fire Academy.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he came back tonight with his eyes like this, babe. That's what happens when you're going there.
Yes, exactly. Purchase order, I move purchase order 1435 to the State and Hampshire Department of Safety, tuition for firefighter one course for firefighter Colin Rose, coming out of training account, eight hundred and ten dollars.
Second, any other conversation, questions about it?
Let's see.
Rose. All those in favor of purchase order 1435, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Colin. Going all the way to Plastow?
Gotta go to Plastow, it's the closest one for right now. The other members that we had finished one a few months ago is in North Caraway. We had another, um, you probably know who Dennis Ciotti is, in Dover, councilman.
Yes.
His son has come to us.
Oh, really?
Would like to pursue a career, so we're working with him to maybe get him started also. This goes with that one, that's the country border side. So I may be able to, another one of these down low, we're trying to class first, it's too late.
They don't want to get trained through the city of Dover?
I tried to slide them in through that. Well, there's not a, not an employee of the city of Dover, so they're not gonna do anything for them. But we're gonna end up putting that building, they'll end up there in five years or so. But if we can get a few years of service out of him, that's kind of what we expect out of these things. I actually have another member, Robbie Roselli. He's got a final chief's interview, he's probably gonna get hired at Pease.
Nice.
So that's pretty much done. That's the third one in a row that we've lost at Pease. I don't use the word lose.
That's okay, he still lives in...
But their availability just goes way down, so. It's another one we train, use for two years, and if they fly off, they come for us, but it's the nature of the beast.
Yeah, if they want to be at full-time.
We're using for a while we can, yeah. I constantly tell them, hopefully, where you come from, so they can still get a time and rub us out, so. This has to go to Caroline also. You want it, or you want to put it in your pile? That's just some other smaller bills that she'll take care of. Yeah, we don't need people, so.
All right.
Now, I heard your discussion with Chief Ducharme, same thing is gonna apply to me. I've already got half my budget all done.
Perfect, still. Because you can get in the better thing.
I'll be more, yeah, the only questions that I have, and I'm not sure how we want to do it, is, there's gonna be, where to include the agreement with the police department for the three months for the purchase of the repeater, the radio system that they bought. So I don't know if that gets built into the budget now.
Yeah, I would think so.
Or where that's gonna come from, because I can do that, I haven't done that.
Remind me again how much it was?
It was eighteen grand, so we're gonna have six grand.
But it, it, okay, so it's six, right? Good, okay.
Yep.
That can go in the regular budget, then.
Put that in my operating budget, and I'll add that into a radio line.
Typically, we, anything under ten.
Okay.
So you would put it as, you would indicate it that it's one of three years, and the next year would be two of three years, and then the last one, so you'd make sure that they know that it's not a one-time deal?
Correct.
Because someone will say, we just did that.
No, I have all paperwork with the agreement through what was then Chief Cal Russo. Chief Burrow now is, is aware of it, so.
It would be just as a note, we can put on the side.
As a note, you know, so then they, three-year contract from the first two years.
Yep, so that's like the first, the first thing there. And the only other thing is, you know, radios, I've been talking about, I guess that's more of a CIP issue.
That would be more of a capital issue, yeah.
So those are the only two big things that I anticipate.
Well, wait a minute, hold on, I thought you wanted to buy some in the operating.
Yeah.
Because you're in trouble. You don't have any money in the CIP for that, do you, right now?
No, well, when we had the CIP meet, meeting, the money that was in there, that's, was gonna be allocated for the air filling station.
Yes.
We were gonna re-channel that back towards radios.
Okay, which we can do that, and then, so is that all you're gonna need? Is that money, or are you gonna have some also in your operating budget?
None of my operating budget purchases.
So how many is that gonna buy?
That's gonna buy six.
And is that, I, I know you're in trouble with that.
Well, I need, I need, I need twenty-five.
Well, I can't have that.
So, hold on, before we get too far ahead.
Yeah.
Is the CIP committee is meeting again before, to make, to make a recommendation?
Yes, but we've already talked about this. You know, I did, but I thought you were also gonna get some in your operating budget, so that would be two different lines, is what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying.
Okay, so, but if you're not, then that's fine.
I mean, I can throw some in there, too, and we can let her go through and see where we're at, because it's all, I just, you know, radio, radio all of a sudden is gonna be our, our normal, um, year-to-year on the, but it's gonna just go exorbitant because of some of these other things that we just don't have control of right now, so. I'm not one to keep adding that, so. We'll see. I'll bring it in, we can discuss it and decide what we want to do with it.
Yeah, but we certainly need to keep it in CIP to have it every year, have something go towards it, you know, just start doing it. And when we get some out, we can transfer.
Yeah, because that's gonna be a three- or four-year proposition to get us all caught up.
But then it's gonna be rotation, it's always gonna be...
Always is gonna be.
Yeah, always gonna, so it's probably always gonna be there.
Always is.
You know, so, but, okay, I just want to make sure, let's play with what your plan was.
Those are the only other real budget things, other than what we've kind of been, I don't anticipate anything else other than those items.
Okay. When is the awards ceremony again? September 24th, it's a Monday night. Okay, I knew it was on the 20th, okay, 24th.
Twenty-four, twenty-three, whatever.
I think 24th sounds right, actually, because, yeah.
I think so.
You're feeling with Mondays on?
The twenty-second.
Twenty-second. Saturday.
It must be the twenty-fifth.
Oh, yeah, because it's Monday night, right, yeah.
Twenty-fourth, yeah.
Two, three, three, two, four.
Yes, alright.
That is the number we, we need.
In coffee.
We will be in coffee first.
Alrighty, anything else?
Anything else, honey?
Alright, very good. The accident that happened yesterday.
Yes.
What hap, what happened to the, to the young men? Did they go off on their merry way? Quite an interesting accident that I came upon. I called it in, so.
Oh, you called it in?
One of the people apparently called it in.
No, he wasn't injured. I mean, he was a little tree about that big, and one cable probably kept him from going ten feet into the.
How, is it that they got on the other side of the road?
He was kinda horsing around. He went off into that turnout, as you come down the hill, there's a turnout on the right. He was gonna go in there and do one of those little Japanese power slide things. Well, he power slid real well, did one, couple of these. Backwards into that guardrail, and almost ended up in that brook. Just a young kid messing around.
Yeah, he was lucky he didn't go over.
He got away with one, yeah. Yep, exactly.
Okay, well, thank you.
Alright.
Have a good night. And the department head for the committee, no? Okay, moving right along. First order of business we have on here is the select board vacancy. We have heard from two different residents, their desire to serve. Have you had a chance to take a look at them?
I did.
Were you ready to act tonight, or do you wanna do an interviews, or?
Are you ready to act tonight?
Yeah, I can if you want to, yes. We don't, we, we didn't, we haven't said whether or not we were gonna do interviews. I mean, I know both of the applicants, so I'm fairly confident that I don't need to interview them, but I've served on committees with both of them, so. I have favorable opinion of both of them, so. But if you're ready, I, we could start talking about them now, or do you wanna, do you wanna interview and have conversations with the candidates?
Well, I don't think I have to interview, but maybe I, I just have to think about it a little bit.
So that I understand, you know, really what they're gonna interview.
There's, both candidates bring something.
I agree.
Yeah, so it's, it's a tough one.
Okay. So you would, do you wanna wait another week? And we can arrange to have, do you wanna interview, like, a one-on-one interview with them, or do you wanna bring them in?
I don't think we have to interview, I just kinda have to.
Oh, you wanna think some?
Maybe we should go on and see, maybe we can.
I told them both that it would be the coming weeks that we'd make a decision. So we don't wanna have to do it tonight, so.
Well, we're not meeting in two weeks, yeah. But maybe we can have a, a meeting just to go over the, the, what each one brings. I don't think we have to have an interview, but.
Okay, I have to, I have to figure out how we, how we do that.
Yeah, it's not a personality issue.
Right, so it's not a, right, it would not be a non-public conversation, it should be a non-public conversation, so. I'm stumped. I will ask the municipal association how they think we should handle it. I would think, I would think having, like, each of them come in, it would be a public meeting, much like when, when the select board, before I got on, interviewed candidates to replace town clerk. They had conversations with, it's not like, you know, when we hired secretary that was private, because it was the person off there. And each candidate came in and was interviewed, so. It doesn't have to be a formal interview process, but have a conversation with each of them and discuss what they think their strengths are, and weaknesses, that's what we're like, so.
Okay.
If that's what you wanna do, I'm, I'm good with that too, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see a disadvantage to waiting in having that conversation, so.
We just really wanna have it done before we go into the biggest time of our year.
In this coming up, in the couple of weeks that starts, so. Yeah, okay.
Alright.
The person will be on board by the, before budget workshop.
Before October first.
Before, we're gonna have, so our budget workshop should be long before October first.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay.
Alright, so.
Oh, that's right, really in August.
Well.
That's true.
September's next week.
Yeah, that's right.
So.
And you don't meet next Monday?
No, we don't meet next Monday, so. Alright, so we will table that for now, and I will let both the candidates know. We'll try, so, calendar right now. So we're not meeting next week, but that doesn't, are you around next week?
I am.
So that doesn't mean that we can't say, I guess we can't, because I already have a planning board meeting on Tuesday night. That doesn't mean we can't say on maybe Wednesday night, ask them to come and have a conversation with us, or Thursday, if you want.
That's true, that's true, yeah.
So what I can, is either night better for you?
I think I'm, we open next week.
Okay. I don't know what we have on the agenda for the planning board, I wonder if we could do it before that, but.
We could do it, what time's the planning board?
Seven, so I don't know.
We could do it at seven.
Yeah.
I think we need a lot of time, just thinking.
Let me, let me reach out to both the candidates and see if Wednesday or Thursday is better, and just see if they have a better time, I mean, I.
You're the one who's fine with it.
I wanna be fair. I don't, I don't wanna say it only, it only an hour, if we're having a, a quick conversation, we, I don't wanna say, oh, too bad, we, we, we're done talking, because we gotta, I gotta run to the planning board, so. I think that's fair.
Okay.
So I'll do that.
Alright.
Okay, moving right along. Town hall, budgets, town hall maintenance, the portico. I've not heard back from the contractors, so, I guess summer time, but we'll see. I don't know what's gonna hap, what's gonna happen this year, to be honest with you. Budget planning, I've asked, I asked Caroline to put administrative support on here, because as we're working through the budget process, I don't wanna lose sight of the ad hoc committee that was gonna make a recommendation to it, or made recommendations to us, wants to do, wants to do a presentation and a hearing to get input from the public about what their thoughts are on, on that. I know that the chair of that committee has been under the weather, so she hasn't been able to schedule anything yet, so. We can reach out to her again, see how, if, what a realistic timeline is for that, but that's why I left it on there. I don't wanna lose sight of that. And the next thing is timeline. So Caroline printed out for each of us, these are the important dates, there's only seven pages of them, from the municipal association, just for SB two towns. There's a separate calendar for, obviously, for traditional town meeting towns. So our, our first big deadline, though, is the, is the fif, eighth of, of, of January, is that's the last day we can give notice before we can have a public hearing. But before that, where did it go? I spent all this time this afternoon highlighting and making notes, and, so the, that's that, but then there's the, to the budget committee, where did it go? We don't have collective bargaining in this town, so we don't have to worry about that date. Here it is, January twenty-fourth. Last day for the official budget committee to deliver copies of the final budget and recommendations to the governing body. That's the twenty-fourth of January, and then we have to have our deliberative session either on the second or ninth of February, so it's, time is of the essence. So I would say we need to start scheduling some budget workshops here in the select board. We have been doing them on Saturdays, we don't have to. We can do it on a different day of the week, if that's better. Typically, we do, you know, two or three-hour chunks, or we have it on like two or three-hour chunks, and going through, going through the budget. Do you have a preference as to when you would like to meet? You prefer the Saturday, or?
For what month are we talking?
September.
I am unavailable three quarters of the Saturdays in September.
Okay.
So I can do during, I can do night meetings.
Okay.
Or I also have half Fridays off.
Okay.
I usually melt, no later than one.
Okay.
So if that's a possibility, I don't know what your schedule is.
I will make it a possibility, that's what we need to do. I'm just looking at my, see how up to date my calendar is on Fridays. It's fairly up to date through September, so. Why don't we then set?
I could do Sunday. On, would you, the twenty-second is Sunday, it would be, I could do it the twenty-third. That's the day of the family day, and it's just another.
Would you be, would you be, oh, would you have, you wouldn't be finishing up doing things for a family fun day on the twenty-third, or maybe all done on the twenty-second?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, I don't wanna.
I don't.
There's a lot, you do a lot, so I don't want to.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't think there's anything that I have to do after that, it's always cleaned up and there is, it's away by that night.
Alright.
I mean, that's just the, the week before we're away, so, and then that's the family day. I, I could do the weekend after that. That's the last week.
Twenty-ninth? Why don't we book the twenty-ninth, and we're gonna have to do some during the week, I'm getting, I'm getting on to that, though. We can also do, come in, or, you know, we can dedicate parts of the meeting time to, to doing the workshop too, if we want to. So the twenty-ninth, we wanna say nine AM here?
Yep.
Budget workshop.
That's for us to do the town meeting, not to meet with these department heads, right?
This will be, I'm gonna, this is, I'm gonna leave the, well, by that point, we may have the, the Fire, the Police, and the Road budgets. But this, this will be administrative and things that aren't department head budgets, that we can.
Yep, okay. So the twenty-ninth, at nine AM, town hall.
Yep, and let's plan to go town noon.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, and then that'll be one big one, and then we're out. Next week, we're gonna do interviews, the tenth, eleventh, the week of the tenth. The eleventh is primary day, so that's out, we're gonna be busy that day. The twelve will be too exhausted after dealing with the town election that day. We do the thirteenth, or the state primary, I don't know. Thirteenth's a Thursday. I don't know what, I think this makes for a really busy week. What about, sorry, I'm just throwing this around here. What about if we start our meetings at six, and the first hour is dedicated to, to budget workshop, and then we start the select board meeting at seven? The regular meeting at seven.
Okay, I can even be here at five-thirty, if you could. We do five-thirty to seven.
Yeah. I'm gonna just do five-thirty, six-thirty, now I don't have to change the, the state of the meeting time, that might be easier. Alright, so let's do that, then, we'll do on the tenth and the seventeenth, we'll do five-thirty?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and this is September?
And the seventeenth.
Five-thirty to six-thirty.
Alright. Caroline, I'll let it go right now, so we got, or my, nine, seventeen, and so nine, ten.
Now, you're gonna ask all of the, or am I gonna ask, I'm not sure who's doing this, but ask like town clerk, tax collector, planning board, zoning board, and all of them to have any financial requests to us by a certain date before these days?
Yes.
Okay, is that me or you?
That's what we're gonna decide to.
Okay.
Tonight, as the rep from, to the budget committee, do you want to handle it?
Okay.
Okay, then I'm fine with that. Five-thirty to, six-thirty, okay, so what I would suggest then is to say to them that they need to have everything in by the, by the twenty-fourth of September.
Why are we doing it after our workshop?
Well, because there are things that we can talk about.
Oh, okay.
There, there are items that we, we will handle, like the electricity, that sort of thing.
Okay. So the twenty-fourth is September?
Yeah, that we will have it, well, we're not really gonna touch it that night, we could tell them by the, by twenty-eighth. That we'll be in by the day before we have our actual budget workshop, unless you think you're gonna do something with.
Well, let's just make it early, and then if they're, if they have to.
Okay, twenty-fourth, yes?
Let's just make it the town board.
Okay.
To all departments.
Budgets in by nine, twenty-four.
So if anybody who's unassociated with this building?
Yep.
Okay.
I can't bother to say.
Where do you put the library?
The library does their own, under their board trustees.
And they go through the budget meeting directly?
They go through the budget review. They typically just let us know, so we can plug it in, so we know what.
But the trustees need to know that, that the schedule has tightened a little bit, so.
I will, if you wanna send word to them, let them know what the, maybe send them a copy if they don't have it already, because Caroline sent us this link to the, we've sent that to them, and just let them know, these are the dates they have to be living by, so. Alright, and we will go from there, so. Where, we don't have it on, well, it's under your board member activities, but I wanna ask now, so the, we're talking about budgeting, the police space needs group did meet, and so you're waiting on other information to come in?
Well, Bobby is meeting with somebody about land.
Okay.
And that hasn't happened yet, and then also, oh, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, somebody has approached him about reutilization of this building, possibly.
Alright.
So those two people that might, might bring us a complete package, you know, this is what we can do with this, this, and, you know. So we're waiting for that. We did have, as a group, we did have a project picked, as in the one that we all felt was the best one. Did you go with that again? Okay, it was the one, the second presentation?
The group.
Yeah, yeah. So, and there was one other thing, oh, oh, man, how's it? I went to ask Bobby something, I totally spaced it. I had had just a, a thought, and I'm not sure if this is even feasible or possible, but if in, in the meantime, that we did go with Silver Street and the, just the town hall and the police department, I was gonna ask Bobby if it's possible that if the police can have half the building up and down, and town can have half the building up and down, then you wouldn't have to have an elevator.
You still have stuff up?
No, I wouldn't, no, I wouldn't.
So.
Okay, she knows more, okay.
Well, first of all, this is the select board meeting.
Yeah.
And the public needs to remember that they shouldn't be making comments that we can hear.
I didn't say a word.
You need to remember that your nodding and gyrating and gesturing is distracting, so.
Because you would have anything to do with the public on the down floor. Upstairs would be planning, zoning, which wouldn't necessarily.
I still think you need to be ADA compliant, so.
But if, but if it doesn't, well, I'm just gonna, I think we should ask the question.
Yeah, no, I think you should.
You know, because that's a big chunk of money that, that we have to do if you're gonna put that second floor on. But it would be stuff that was upstairs that the public doesn't have to go upstairs for.
But, okay, I, I think you should ask the question, but I, I would have reservations about it.
Yeah. But anyway, that's what we're waiting for. We're waiting for Bobby to have his two conversations, and then he's gonna call us and have a meeting again.
Okay. Alrighty, so we are out of the timeline. Residents' tax.
Did you get an answer on that?
I have, no, I have not, I haven't received an answer yet, so. Before we can actually make a decision, we need to know whether or not the select board in any town can make a decision, or if it has to be via town meeting. So if it does, then it would need to be either the select board or petitioned by residents to do a warrant article, if that's the case, but. We're investigating on how it actually came into place in town, so. Whether or not it was just put, I am imagining it had to have been put in place by a town meeting action at some point, so, but maybe not, so. We are standing by to find out from the DRA where we're at. Tax rate setting process, the MS five thirty-five is not in our folder, because we're waiting on information from the trustees of the trust funds.
Yes, I'll be, yeah.
So what I would suggest is, once that information is in, we need to sign it, so we can send it off.
Yep, yeah, there was some things that were listed on the bottom of that, that notification that said that they were late. Do you know what those were, those were? I know she was only addressing the tax rate setting, but did you see that three things that were on the bottom there?
They've been submitted, yeah, they were, I don't remember what they were, I'm gonna look.
I can't remember what they were either.
They've already been submitted, 'cause I asked the question too, and Caroline said, no, no, they, they'd already been submitted, so. It wasn't actually an issue, 'cause I freaked out myself, and said, what the heck is going on? But no, they, they were, in fact, already submitted, and let's see if I can find it.
It's okay, I mean.
It's, it's a moving issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I already, I asked, I already asked about it, they, they've been taken care of. There were, there were reports that had already been filed, so. So what I would, would suggest is that, once it's ready tomorrow, we can sign, we'll, we'll make a motion tonight that we can come in this week and sign it, because we need to get it off.
Okay.
Concord sooner or later, so we can get this taken care of, so. I would move that we authorize the select board to come in during the week to sign the MS five thirty-five, once prepared.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we're all set there. Recreation, how about a budget update?
We don't have one yet. We're still waiting for final invoices to be paid. But we had a really good meeting, we did a, we had the pros and cons of the program. What we're gonna look to do for next year. Starting budgeting very soon as well, actually, now that I have dates, I can talk to Dee. But we're still waiting for things to come in, so. I think it's better than what I had said, or what we had projected, if I understand that. Do you know if we still have a little bit of downfall?
I, I'm assuming, yes.
Yeah, but not as large as we had thought. So that's a good thing. There are a few processes that we're gonna have to change next year, and one of them is the snack, the snack cards, and because what they did was, parents gave money and put them on a card, and it got deducted, and now.
It's a note card.
Yeah, and, and so now we have to reimburse people for twenty-five cents, and, you know, it's like, so we have to kinda revamp that a little bit, I think, so we don't have to do, the reimbursement's a small dollar amount, so. They were gonna look to notify to people to see if they wanted to donate it towards the program, and that, and I haven't, did you hear anything on that?
I already donated my three dollars and fifty cents, but.
Oh, did they, they did notify you?
No, I asked a question about it.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Talked to Caroline, saying, oh, just to keep it.
So, anyway, so, but, you know, I think all in all, I think everyone felt that the program went really well, and and we're gonna discuss, based on the budget that we're gonna present, it's a possibility that it's gonna go up, but not by a lot. Yeah.
Sounds good, but yeah, so.
So we can leave it on there, please, so that I can get you.
Most definitely.
Oh, there's a snack refund.
Yeah, no, it's, I had, I added it on, because it's.
Yeah, we need, if you leave that on, and then.
I think what I had suggested was to Caroline, that's just to you all, is that we send a letter, email, however, the best way to communicate with these folks is letting them know what their, their, their balance is, if they would like a refund, to let us know in writing, and we will refund it. If not, can we, it's a very donation to the recreation club. So the onus is on the people to reply in writing, back to us, so. I mean, some of it was a quarter, and one was a forty-something dollars, for one payment.
Yeah, and that price, probably one there's, which is fine, that's reasonable, but...
It's a lot of twenty-five cent nice parts.
They're a lot, yeah, yeah, so we'll...
It's a lot of money.
Exactly.
Anyhow, so, yeah, it's a work in progress, so...
Yep.
Perfect, all right. Transfer station revised ordinance, in the folder, this will be, we voted to accept the changes last week, and now we need to sign off on them, 'cause we didn't want to talk to them, to sign off on them, so we'll just do it right now, we're on track.
And where will I find that?
I'm sorry?
Where will I find that revised?
I have been sending a link to it.
Thank you.
It was in, it was not linked last week, okay, doesn't matter, you can sign first.
The one on the website last week was not.
Was the older one, right?
The older one?
Was the older one.
Which didn't have, okay, so the, all the, I know Caroline went in and accepted all the changes in the Google Drive, 'cause we officially adopted them, so we can provide a link now to you that has it on there.
I can put a note on it, I'll just send it, send you the link to it, okay?
Unless the fees get a little higher, it's gonna be... That's gonna be the official one, all right. All right, filing plans for the planning board, we had discussed this last week relative to whether or not the tax collector was going to do it, we never set the fee, we never officially set the fee.
Oh.
So what the planning board consultant has suggested was fifty dollars to cover the, to cover the cost of the staff time, which begs the question, how much does the person actually getting get, because you have to pay taxes, it's not, it's not free money.
It's salary, so...
You have to pay taxes on this one, Caroline double-checked it, it's an extra, although we knew we had to, but, so does that mean the person actually performing it gets forty dollars, or do they get fifty dollars, and so then the fee is sixty dollars to the person actually, the applicant actually doing the filing? I said it was fifty dollars, I assumed in my mind that the person doing the actual work would get forty dollars, but we weren't clear about that, so we need to decide what our intention is, is it sixty dollars, and then the person doing the work gets fifty, or is it fifty and then they get forty? We never, we never decided, and...
Well, they get, they get fifty, but some of it goes to taxes.
But the town, right, well, so the town, the processing of all the taxes and stuff, the town would have to carry that cost. Maybe I'm not being clear, but, so if it's fifty dollars, the filing fee, there are still taxes that need to be taken out of that, and staff time and all that to do that, I mean, it's not a lot, but, so the fee is supposed to cover, a fee is supposed to cover the actual service, right? So that's where some of the confusion came, was it, are we, is it fifty dollars and we're taking, we're taking just the taxes out of that, is it fifty dollars and the taxes are taken out of that, and then they get the remainder?
I see what you're saying, the town portion of the stuff.
Correct.
I got it.
So it's...
Got it.
It's not a lot of money.
Got it, got it, yeah.
It's not, we're not, but we should be clear. Excuse me, so to be fair to the employee doing it, or who may not wanna do it, or whatever, so...
I don't have a preference either way, I mean, what is your feelings on it?
I thought it was fifty dollars in that they would get a portion of it, so...
Yeah.
Not, not fifty dollars and not have to pay taxes out of it, and the town needs the taxes, that's not, doesn't seem right to me. But I would, so if we wanna say the person gets fifty dollars and they take taxes out of it, that's fine. But there still is gonna be staff time associated with the town doing it, it's not, it's minimal. Probably doesn't memorize the occasion of talking about it, but it's still there, so we should acknowledge it.
So this is...
Not create more problems.
This is gonna be part of the, I mean, she wouldn't get two payroll checks, right?
Yes.
She would?
Yes, that's what the auditor wants it.
Really?
They, I mean, I...
I mean, you should be able to identify.
Well, I would imagine, but the auditor said, when I spoke to Caroline today, that suggested that there'd be two different checks, so... I think the employer that's getting it would prefer to have two different checks as well, so it's, it's not as if... It'd be honoring that request.
Under one W two.
Yeah, you would still have to pay taxes.
It's gotta be a total under one. Fifty's fine with me, and then they get forty or whatever.
Okay, so the fee is fifty, but the person doing the filing for the town gets forty of it, and the rest of the town, ten, remaining ten goes to cover expenses on the town side, okay?
Do you think that's...
Yeah, what I had imagined was happening, but, um...
Okay, let's, do we have to vote on that?
Yeah, let's do that. You make the motion, and I'll say...
Make a motion that we're charging the fifty dollars for the...
The applicant pays.
Applicant, okay, the applicant pays fifty dollars for filing plans for the planning board, and forty of it goes to the person who is going to be...
The employee doing the...
Employee who's, 'cause it may not necessarily be always her, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so the forty of it will go to the employee who...
For filing?
For filing.
Okay, I'll second that, you did that, tell me for the record, okay. All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, all right, so it's a fifty dollar fee, forty to be permitted to the employee doing the filing, okay. And ten to cover the town costs, okay. All right, so the next thing on the agenda is alternative electric sources. We've talked about this in the past, we've been approached again by another company claiming they can save us money on our electric rates. The water department have been looking into this, it's, it's not possible for a commercial, and we're considered a commercial venture, to buy on the same market than a residential can, so you and I can go to this website that lists like twenty different sources to buy, but a town or a commercial enterprise cannot utilize those, but there are commercial brokers that do that, and one of these approached us, so the water department is still very interested in trying to save their rates, and I think we should be very interested in saving ours. They're willing to start looking into and looking for commercial brokers and doing the legwork, so I applaud them.
Is this person that approached us a commercial broker?
Yes, so we pass that information on to them, if they wanna look into it more.
And do a presentation or...
And they can let us know what they found out, and it's always strength in numbers, so...
Can we link with the civil water? Can we do it a joint thing?
I don't know, we'd have to look into...
If we don't pay their bills.
Right, it would still be separate, in my mind, it's similar to like the, what Townes and Energy does, like the school and the...
Yeah.
They're still coming to Rollins for delivering oil, Mamson, that you pay, it's separate deposit money.
But it makes the thicker pot better, so it gives a better pricing, so I'm not sure if electricity does the same thing.
Well, they're willing to look into it, I applaud them for that, and we can reap the benefits of their legwork, hopefully. I mean, the other thing that we should be thinking about too, I mean, we have, we have been approached in the past, and we never found the time to look into it further, but if for some reason we stay in this building, why don't we have solar panels on the roof? If we have several pieces of property in this town, we have overall Greenwood Drive, very large tract of land, we have a solar farm there, and then we currently rent the field out for very modest rent, we'd be making a lot more money off of that, doing that, I don't know if that's the place to do it, but we have, may have you a blame to transfer station, we should start taking about, I think, some of these things too, and that could offset the operating cost for electricity, so... But it takes time, so I know we always have the best of intentions, but we run out of time, so that is something I think we should start looking at. I don't know if it's gonna work in this budget process, but at least start talking to people and maybe getting ready for next year. Start now. But that's why alternate, alternative electric sources is on there. Stratford Regional Planning Commission Energy Aggregation Proposal, that's a mouthful, that's also, so SRPC is looking at perhaps doing something similar with, with other towns in the county, banging together to see if we can get better electric rates by doing whatever they come up with, but I think we should probably be interested in at least hearing what they have to say.
Yeah.
If we can save some money, I think that would be a positive, a positive on the tax rate.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
On that other one, the electric sources, was it just the town hall, or was it all, all buildings, was it like the fire station?
Yeah, it was supposed to be for everybody, yeah, 'cause, I mean, you buy your, I mean, currently we buy our electricity through Eversource. Eversource is now officially out of the power generation business, after they sold, they finally sold their last of their hydro dams, so... So email, they sent it to us.
They saw that today, yeah.
Was it today, or whatever they sent it to us, that's what it said, so I don't know if that means it's better now, 'cause they'll have to buy off the, over market, I don't know. There still would be a middle person, I'm assuming, so they would wanna make money somehow, I'd imagine they would charge us more for the electricity, but we don't know yet, but it's something we should be exploring if we can save money, I think we should be trying to do it.
Absolutely.
Transfer station post closure report, I'm still waiting on one more question to be answered about the full length of the actual quote-unquote cap. Landfill, and once that's done, it's done, we can sign it and send it off, so...
Okay, good.
I was hoping it would have been done this week, but it's, it'll be done by next week, so, well, we won't be here anyways, but it will be done by next week, so... Town administration, board member activities, what else do you have going on? We've pretty much done your updates, so...
I'm free this week.
Okay, well, you too. Building permits, this is a building permit, this is a letter, I don't know what it is. Oh, this is from Nelson Lowery regarding the railroad crossing. He actually called me about this as I was walking out the door, he wanted to ensure that I realized there was a typo in it, I'm trying to find it for him, but I don't see it, the date, oh, yeah, it's not twenty-one oh eight, it's twenty eighteen. He just wanted me to make, he wanted me to change it up because he is very concerned about the official record, and that's better enough, it's now says twenty eighteen, not twenty-one oh eight. Nelson cares very deeply about the historical record, so, anyway, around for select persons, please consider this communication a follow-up to my observation made a few weeks ago on the Pan American Railway grade crossing at Church Street in Salmon Falls Village. Four days ago, on August twenty-third, my wife and I were driving across the vehicular bridge spanning the Salmon Falls River and connecting Main Street to South Row, with Front Street in the village. I noticed an eastbound freight train crossing the upper trestle, so I drove under the railroad overpass and vents to the Church Street grade crossing. To remind my, to remind my concern what has been on the breach in the street pavement as part of the crossing, such that the left-hand track looking eastward towards Portland is no longer adequately supported. As I anticipated, when the forward truck of each freight car enters onto the unsupported portion of that track, the car leans to the left at this point in time only a little, and as the rear truck exits the unsupported section of the track, the car rocks at this point only a little. That cavity or trench will only get worse and likely not at a gradual rate. Autumn rain, water caught down there will become frozen as winter ice, and thus exacerbate the problem, but at an intensified rate of decline. Rather, many years ago now, there was a similar problem in one of the grade crossings in Rochester. Despite growing concern from the city fathers, nothing was done about the problem by the New Hampshire North Coast Railroad, and one night a whole bunch of sand-laden hopper cars ended up on the ground in the middle of the city, not pretty. The Church Street grade crossing is not safe, Pan Am needs to fix it pronto, signed Nelson H. Lowery, a resident. So the road agent's been in contact with, with the railroad, he's not here this evening, obviously, so we'll get an update the next time he comes in. Do you want this for the...
Yeah, I wanna put that in.
Perfect, okay, so I know, I'm assuming everything else in here is a building permit, so, let's see, let's get to one. Yes, okay, first one is... Oh, what is this? It doesn't have a permanent number attached to it. Oh, it's to replace a failed septic system.
Is that one on the...
Woodland Drive, Six Woodland Drive. Tom was reviewed, please use this for your approval instead of regular form, thanks, Tom, reviewed eight twenty-seven. And then they have the state form here, so the check to the town, then the state into the state, so... Make sure we don't just stamp a new one, it's been signed off by Tom, so...
Oh, this is one that needs to stamp, right?
It just needs a stamp on here, yeah, on the copies, I'm pretty sure. So, tell me, I guess the best way to put it in here is just, septic review for Six Woodland Drive. There are several copies, yeah, I think, or signed by Tom. Okay, so the first building permit we have...
So we have to stamp and sign, right?
Yes.
Received.
No, numerical order, I'll wait till Denise is done. I usually try to do this before the meetings start, but... And then we have one other septic we need to do, I'm gonna do it now.
Is this just one, so that just... There's only two?
There's only two copies, huh? Yeah, only one here, so... So we also have another septic, it's for a hundred and ten Rollins Road, it's been reviewed by Tom Clark, this is the application for the, that subdivision that was approved by the planning board, so, this is for their septic system.
Does this go to you, or what do I have to do? Do I have to sign them?
Yeah, we've signed them, so we're all signed, so you have to stamp, and Tom's reviewed that one as well, so... And Tom is working with the applicants about the upgrade to the road, getting an agreement with the town before they can do any of that, so...
Why am I signing this? We haven't agreed to this yet.
What's that?
This is...
The septic?
Have we?
What's that?
Have we agreed to this project at all?
Oh, to the building permit?
Yeah.
We have not agreed to a building permit.
Why wouldn't it send a similar one? Okay.
So...
Should we, I've written a note saying, should I, should...
I'm just, I'm gonna look and see if there weren't any notes on here. The last time we talked about this as a board, we said we're gonna ask Tom to review, it's a good point, thank you, review to the road, look at the road, so we can get something, so then we can move forward, and then the next step would be whether or not we're gonna do a building permit, okay, so, all right.
So we should hold on to it, right?
Any posted note, please, yeah. Do we have a road agreement in place, gentlemen, which I know we don't, because we have it signed off on.
Right.
I made another one. Now we have the actual building permits. It may actually be one in here, so I may have...
Oh, maybe, okay.
Now that I've written that note on here, I was gonna say, maybe he already reviewed it and he's got it attached to it, but let's see, I didn't see it in there, so... Okay, the first building permit I made is twenty eighteen dash zero eight two, if I'm not doing this right, did we change the process? I don't know, it's in, it's a heating, it's HVAC, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
That's for the new addition, the new building, right?
Yeah.
We usually do, you know, map the lot of street.
Yeah, so, eighty Roberts Road, HVAC. Been reviewed by Mr. Clark, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollar fee. These are things that stand the same, building permit twenty eighteen dash zero eight three, eighty Roberts Road, this one is plumbing, reviewed ninety-five dollars. Can you check off current, please? I can check off current, in four persons.
Got it.
Did I write a date in there? Did I write today's date?
Yes. Expire, oh, you want to do nineteen?
No, can you do six thirty nineteen?
Expires on six thirty nineteen?
Yeah. Can't expect a poor man to have a gun by tonight. Okay, it's, uh, next is twenty eighteen dash zero eight four, four three three Spruce Street. It's electrical work. Fee is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Okay, twenty eighteen dash zero eight five, four three three Spruce Street. This is the plumbing permit. It's a hundred and seventy-five dollar fee. The last one we have tonight is twenty eighteen dash zero eight six, fifteen Heritage Drive. It's electrical, I'm doing with their pool. It is a ninety dollar fee. I have to go and pull it. Review of correspondence. So, first, uh, order of business in the, um, folder is, um, termination letter for employees that we had to terminate last week. It'll be signed. Next is, uh, the change in hours for, um, for Caroline that we, we voted on last week. Okay, go back in there. Okay, so these are the, um, last week we authorized, um, I thought we had four or five. There's only three that are ready now.
Didn't we already do some last week?
We signed the approval. Now we need to sign the checks.
Oh, okay.
Checks, are they in there?
No.
Or this is approval, we've already cut the checks tomorrow, I guess.
Yeah, unless you have the checks and you're filing, you have to file the checks.
Didn't see them either. I'll double check. Are they there? There are some. We've already approved them, so it could be. I didn't notice, that's through the retirement system. That's outstanding when we do. Let's see. There was the, um, the Clem, uh, Rollins Road, ones in, uh, one to Settis Land Trust, one to Hampton Corner Realty, and one to Eleanor Janavis. Let's see. Let's see them in here. There she is. Okay, so last week there was five. There's only three checks, because two of them are going to the, to the same holder. They were separate parcels, so that one was signed off on, which we've already agreed to. All three checks are in here. That one is there, and. Two hundred and eighty-two dollars, and there it is. All right, so they were signed off on. They were already previously approved last week, so. Typically, so she usually puts all the, whatever we approved the week before, it goes in this folder, so let's say, Consolidated Communications for whatever it's for. That's, that's the new phone company, right? So it's forty-eight dollars for the, for the phone bill, so that's in there. This should have been in here, actually, so they were.
Okay.
But because they came from the tax collector, they're all good, okay. We want, we approved them last week, so we didn't have to pay interest.
Right.
So that's why they were approved last week, but the checks didn't get cut by this week, so they're good to go. That's what that was.
Do you have any idea what this is?
What am I?
The bottom one. I'm not going to sign it until I know what it is.
It's for the, um, fire department.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't say what it is, though.
Right.
I don't know. It's, uh, typically they're, like, business supplies and stuff, but I don't know. It could be in cartridges, that's all I know. But we should ask her.
Yeah, I'll have her ask, and I'm going to, I'll comment on it if it's absolutely. Can I have that for a second? No, but yes, thank you. I think I said okay. Do you want to look at them? Do you want to look at them? You know, I don't know if I talked about this last week. One of the things that I noticed when I was looking at the, um, gasoline credit card, we don't have a correspondence, we don't have a correspondence, so.
That's it? Are there really any of it?
Yeah, that was it. There was, the only correspondence was the, um, the letters.
For, oh, they're inside?
Yep.
Okay.
So the only, the only thing I, I noticed was when I was sending the, you know, the gas, um, the thing when they go and fill up the pickup trucks and, you know.
And the Cruisers and all that.
And the Cruisers and all. There is a lot of people who no longer work for the town of Rollinsford whose name showed up on the bill.
What do you mean?
Well, what it is, is they probably just gave that code to somebody else, but I think that we should, we should make it a real habit of taking a name off, and, and if you don't have a name at that time, putting a name on it and then, I don't know who does that. Do you know who does it? Is it Caroline?
What are the company that's, we vote for? I'm sure it doesn't.
Well, but someone's going to notify them that we no longer have an employee, you know.
Be sure you're in the code, yeah, we should make a note of that.
Because like Highway had Jeff's name, not George's.
Not George's?
No, I mean, just gone over a year.
Right, that should be, yes, yes.
And then the police had one, and the fire had one.
Is it each person? So like say, each officer goes and fills up? Do they have their own code?
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
And in the fire department, I think it's only the officers that have it. And the Highway, I would assume.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Ed or George or whatever could do it. Well, we didn't have a, an assistant when Jeff was on there, so it was probably only Jeff.
Probably.
But it just seems like if we don't have them as an employee, we shouldn't have it on.
Oh, I agree.
An authorization.
I agree. They change. All right. I will ask Caroline tomorrow. I will say. Anything else?
That's all, I have it in here.
And any input? Time to speak.
Just to remind, uh, that you got a ten or twelve-foot piece of wood above the window in the back that rotted and fell off. I'm not saying you got to do anything with it, just to remind you that you know it's still there.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, I do. Why don't you form a committee for solar?
There is a, um, there was that energy committee before. We could, we could think about revising that, right?
I'm, I'm just thinking that I bet there would be a lot of people who would be interested in specifically getting solar power into town.
I think so too, yeah. It's confusing to me, but.
You know, rather than being, looking at light bulbs and all this other stuff.
Yeah.
I can, if it's our desire, I could put something together and send it out. Oh, the only other thing that I had for tonight, I don't want to forget. We haven't adjourned yet. You're okay, I wanted to send the notification out to the town's folks about Oak Street being paved.
Oh, yeah, 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 yes, that's.
Dover still hasn't told us officially yet, but they're thinking this week?
Yeah.
Or next week, so I, I had to be very vague over the next few weeks.
Well, just telling them.
I want people to have a heads up. It's going to happen at night, though. I mean, I wish I could give more of a warning. What if they, if Dover actually follows through and tells us before the crew goes out there? I don't remember what company they're doing.
But the next part is it's going to be nighttime.
I'm sure the people that live on the street will complain to us at nighttime.
Yeah. Yeah.
There are, yeah, it needs to get done.
Yeah, yeah, no.
It would be a hassle.
Absolutely.
Closing it during the daytime.
Oh, God, yeah. I know, it's strange every time I come up and say, is it done yet now or not?
Yeah, so I will send that out, but. All right, any other community input? All right, you're adjourned at, uh, seven fifty-two.
Is that something George, I'm just picking up from the dumb charting?
Oh, it's not that, it's, it's, it's not just that, it's, um, it's the panel, it's missing, so.